All right, we will call the meeting to order this evening, please, with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Ohm.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxor.
She's on her way.
Caught in the traffic.
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Bell?
Absent.
Caught in the traffic?
Absent. All right, if there are no questions on the agenda tonight, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening. That takes us to community input. Mr. Ryan Hofer for the Brandon Valley High School Classroom Volunteer Experience.
Hey, I'm Ryan Hofer, and my son Sam is a sophomore, and my daughter Erin is a seventh grader. And I was honored to talk about the exciting topic of insurance to the high school personal finance classes on December 11th and 15th. Mrs. Kennett and Ms. Johnson and Mr. Olson all had groups of kids who were engaged and extremely respectful. I think we all try to make a difference in the world, and these teachers are doing some of the best work. I got a number of welcome to class handshakes, countless thank yous after class. And as I left, I even got a "Hey, thanks for coming" from Mr. Pruitt as we crossed paths in the parking lot. One exercise that I make the kids do as we're talking about the value of a life is I ask them to think of the person that loves them the most in this world. And then I tell them that somebody out there is thinking of them in that exact same way. Mr. Olson stopped me and said that that exercise probably affected a student or two at a time when they needed it the most. I'm glad that we have such great teachers reaching kids when they need it the most every single day. I want to publicly commend the staff, the teachers, the administration, and the board for all the work you've done and continue to do to make Brandon Valley the best district in the state. Thanks.
Thank you. General business. Under oral reports, we have a good news report for the elementary schools, the STEM program.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. In front of you, give me one second. In front of you, Mrs. Saxor, there's a robot. If you could just locate on the side of the robot, there's an on and off button. It's a little round button. Go ahead and press that. And Mr. Scott, could you do yours on your side as well? And then just place him down on that black line, and he will do his thing. So as you're listening to this presentation tonight, just go ahead and keep an eye on those robots for me. Those are called our Ozobots, and like Dr. Larson said, these are used with first graders. So hopefully, they do what they're supposed to do. So, Dr. Larson, go ahead. You can press play there for me. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would like to give you a short update since I last saw you, last February. Our robots were purchased through the South Dakota Department of Education grant. That was a $200,000 grant. And last spring, the robots were purchased. Up here on the table in front of you, you can see a display of some of those robots. And then also, over the summer, those robots were distributed to all of the campuses. Also, over the summer, as you can see here, we held robot bootcamps for our teachers in kindergarten through fifth grade. And they had a phenomenal time creating lessons and learning how to use the robots. And when school came back in session in September, we introduced the robots to all of the students with robot parades on each campus. Those are some pictures there from Fred Assam. We even got to see Ms. Foster dressed up as a robot. It was a fantastic time. Dr. Larson, if you could go ahead and pause the video for me. Thank you. What I would like to do now, ladies and gentlemen, is introduce to you three teachers who participated in that robot bootcamp. And they will be talking a little bit more about the robots that they use with their students on their campuses. So first up is Mrs. Mary Guile. She is the computer teacher at BVIS as well as Inspiration. And then after that, we will talk with two teachers from Robert Bennett's, Noel Suni, who teaches fourth grade, and Megan Dearden, who teaches second grade.
So I need the next slide, please. So the graphics, the slides that I have or the pictures that I have that go along with my talk, the first group is the fifth graders. I did not teach that lesson. The classroom teachers were, and I believe they were doing something with plant life and things like that. So this was something that the fifth grade teachers, science teachers, did with the students, and they are using the Spheros. And this is Dash, and the third graders at Inspiration Elementary. My students, when it's robot day, go absolutely crazy. They absolutely love it. It's definitely a challenge for me to... Do you want to just stop that? Can you pause the video? Yep. It's a challenge to get with the elementary kids 30 minutes, start to finish, in a class period, but we do it. And it's exciting, and so thank you so much for letting us be a part of that. Thank you.
I'm Noel Suni, and I teach fourth grade at Robert Bennett's.
And I'm Megan Dearden. I teach second grade. And our two classes meet once a week for what started as reading buddies and kind of turned into more STEM projects. And then when the robots came, gave us more opportunities for student engagement. And these are our students working together. There was a video on there, too, but she's going to talk a little bit more.
And at the beginning of the year, when we were thinking how we could implement these robots, we were just planning individual lessons, and then it quickly became multi-week units. We've done things like coding how to navigate a map and trick-or-treating routes, the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, building a snowman with a Lego gripper attachment to the robots. We've got plans for Iditarod, March Madness, and the Masters Tournament, and Summer Olympics, so a lot of fun things planned ahead.
And when these units started getting longer, we realized that we were actually covering more multi-grade standards. So some of my second graders, well, all of my second graders, have already been introduced to angles, and we've been working a lot with measurement. And we don't touch on angles in second grade, and they are loving it. So it's just something extra that we realize can just kind of deepen their knowledge of those subject areas, so.
And not only content standards, but just seeing how they're really developing their 21st century skills. They're doing a lot of critical thinking, the amount of planning they do between these projects. Communication, collaboration, and leadership is really fun to watch. So we're very thankful for the use of these robots, and we know that our kids are loving them and really getting a lot out of them, so thank you.
And I think this video that's coming next, the students coded the letters in links, and they wrote all the angles, all the measurements, and all their plans for how they needed to code the letters. And it's put to music.
Sure.
Thank you, Mary, and Noel, and Megan. Board of members, do you have any questions for me?
No. Tremendous job, tremendous job by our staff incorporating them and utilizing this new program. I think you might have some exciting news to share. Would you want to do that kind of as the send-off to our good news report?
I do, I do. So Sherri Nelson and I found out literally about an hour ago that we will be able to extend this program into sixth grade. We were awarded with a grant through another South Dakota organization. And we'll have more details on that coming soon, but we'll be able to extend the program, excuse me, into sixth grade, so.
Thank you very much. All right, takes us to administration reports. Administrative center? Sorry.
You're good.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items to update the board on here this evening. We continue to work through our processes regarding our strategic planning review, working with our respective liaison councils, receiving feedback that way. In addition to that, we'll be disseminating a parent survey here later this winter, and then also provide some open house opportunities this spring. So certainly appreciate everyone's engagement through that respective process. Would note that BV Listens 3.0, which is our work environment survey, was disseminated on December 21st. The deadline has been extended by one week to January 24th. So it was originally due back on the 17th, but we wanted to give folks a little bit more time because of the missed days and some of those types of things. So that is due on the 24th. Legislative session began on January 9th. Would just note that things move really quickly out in Pier in terms of bills. So if you have a level of interest in that, would certainly point you towards the Associated School Board's webpage for their respective bill tracker. In addition to ASBSD, I also utilize the SASD and Large School Group Bill Tracking Communications. So legislative session is off and running. Proud to tell you that on Thursday, the Brandon Valley Middle School and High School Student Councils will be joining a group of Brandon patrons for Brandon Day at the Legislature. So they're heading out there and have a number of individuals that they will be meeting with. So look forward to engaging in that respective process out in Pier on Thursday. The school administrators' reception and those respective items in terms of legislative meetings are the following week. So January 31st is when that's set up. Budget process, again, we've had this in front of you for the last few months, but just want to make certain everyone is aware of kind of the way that that budget process works. So at this exact moment in time, what I would tell you is you should expect to see a presentation of the five-year plan at our second meeting in February. That's when we hope to have that out and advertised to you. And then you can see as we move through the months of March, there are some big-ticket items. Specifically, I would point to the preliminary capital outlay budget being presented and approved as that impacts other things within the capital outlay budget that we're capable of doing. You'll see a preliminary budget in May, and then we will look to hold the public budget hearing and take potential action in July. This year's respective academic calendar, a couple of items to note. There's no school on Friday, February 16th. There's no school on Monday, February 19th. That is President's Day. March 11th is parent-teacher conferences at the intermediate school and middle school. March 12th, parent-teacher conferences at the elementary and high school. March 14th was a snow day. We will be in session on March 14th. And then I would just share with you that I plan to bring forward a calendar recommendation in terms of the three snow days we've had this year. We are making up one, currently evaluating the academic calendar and recommendation moving forward. So you can expect to see that in February in terms of how we will be managing and dealing with those additional two days. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you have. We have a couple of other items that we'll be addressing underneath the administrative reports, but I certainly would stand by for any questions specifically to me at this point, if you have any. With that, something that you see every year is the statistical digest information as provided by the Department of Education. Mr. Lundberg would certainly turn it to you for comment.
Not much to add, just that we're back in familiar territory, ranked at 142nd out of 149. The previous year, we were ranked 132. It was due to a very large textbook adoption that jacked us up there. But the 142 out of 149 puts us in the lower 5% of the schools in the state of South Dakota for per pupil spending.
Yeah. Well, I'll be brief, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Olson. But when I was fortunate enough to move into this position, you know, four and a half years ago, you know, a vision of mine was a school without walls. And I think a passion that I have had is authentic educational experiences for our students while they're in high school to determine if this is a route they want to go or not go before they get to college. Then I got smart, and I surrounded myself with some people that had the same view, and Mr. Olson is a great example of that and has had made a major impact at the high school level on that piece of, you know, bringing people like Mr. Hofer in and having a mutual respect both ways, where our students love having outside people come in and share a little bit about different things in our community and real-life things. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Olson to share some exciting news and some stuff we've been working on for quite a while.
Thank you. And I think the first thing, too, just, school board, we appreciate all that you do. I know a lot of the work is behind the scenes and don't always get credit for the work you do, but thank you for what you do. So we, as administrators and teachers and support staff, can do what we do in ultimately impacting our students and the community. And as you heard tonight, too, it's amazing, all the incredible things that are going on in our district, that all the teachers and the teams that are all part of that, as well as the administrators, are working together to create incredible opportunities for our students. And that's really what this is, too. And this is a very cool, community, kind of collaborative effort that we have. And it starts off with a guy by the name of Jared Smart, a local contractor, who came in and talked to Dr. Larson and had an idea. He said, "Hey, I want to help figure out how do we help students that are interested in the construction trades to be able to have experiences?" Because that was something that impacted him when he was a high school student, and it's what caused him to be the builder that he is today. And so through that, and kind of a team of people, we've come together and created a really exciting opportunity for students for next fall. Next fall, there's going to be a construction trades class offered here at the high school. Mr. Tom Grody is going to be the teacher in charge. And then what's going to happen is with this partnership, the students are going to build a cabin for Yogi Bear. Depending on time, we'll see how many we can get, but for sure, one cabin. And just that authentic learning experience, like Mr. Saltway talked about, a classroom and a school without walls. But in this case, we're building walls outside of the school. And so kind of exciting, and we're going to have it on the north part of campus. That way, people in the community can see what's happening and how things are progressing. And so we're excited to see that. We're also partnering with Jared Smart, but other contractors that want to be part of this. Because what ultimately we want is for students that are interested in this type of career, the construction trades, for them to get, to kind of start to finish, what does this look like? From everything, from bidding a project to understanding materials and code, buying materials and assembling them, putting them together, and then even just the construction and transport, what does this entire process look like? And so our hope is that we'll have other people from the community that want to be part of it and share their expertise and help students walk through, understanding, how do you actually build something? And then from there, too, we also want to expose our students to other opportunities within the community. There's going to be times where the weather's maybe not the best, that we're not going to be able to work on this project. And we want to take them kind of on field trips, where they can go out to local job sites to see that firsthand experience. That way, they're able to figure out, is this what I want to continue for my future or not? And so with that, as part of this, Yogi Bear is our partner, and they want this constructed. They're excited, and there's potential for ongoing cooperation with this. But part of it is there's going to be a donation to the Brandon Valley Community Foundation as just a way to give back to the community. And so part of that idea that we want students to see that it's, yes, we want to create this incredible opportunity, but we also want to impact other people. And so we are really excited about launching this this fall. It's going to be in registration opportunities for students this spring here. There will be an application process, and students will have to complete Woodworking 1 and 2 to be eligible for that. And so just an exciting, authentic learning opportunity where students are able to see this for themselves. And it makes me think about, I love to travel and been able to travel quite a bit in the world, but one place I've been is called Sagrada Familia, and it's in Barcelona, Spain. If you get a chance, you have to take a look at it. It's an amazing basilica, and a guy by the name of Anthony Goudy started working on it in 1883. He came up with all these plans and designs and models, and he was working on it for a number of years. And then in 1926, he passed away, and the plans went on to the next person. And they continued, and as they finished their part of it, it went on to the next person, and the next person. It's still not finished yet. Originally, plans were that it was going to be finished in 2026, but that's been extended. And I think about that as us as educators and how we get students for a period of time, and they're a work in progress, that we get to be a part of that in an impactful way, but then we pass them on to the next person that's going to be able to make that impact. And I think about that with this program, that what we're doing is laying this foundation for what's next and helping these students to think about their future. We may not see that finished project, but we get an incredible opportunity right now to impact students' lives, and we want to set them up for success and empower them for their future. Any questions that you guys have? One thing, too, I forgot to mention, we want to keep this local, and so buying the materials and some of the other things that we have partnered are going to be with local businesses here in kind of Brandon Valley School District is our plan.
How many kids do you plan on enrolling into this project?
So I'll let you speak that specifically.
This first year, we're looking at a smaller group, somewhere in that five to eight range is kind of what we're thinking. We believe the interest will be there. We'll probably have 12 to 14 applications at least is what we're thinking from just preliminary conversations that we've had. Yep, juniors and seniors.
Will this be your typical class period during the school day? Is this going to be after hours?
Yep. So we will actually, we will block it, so it'll be a two periods of the day. And our plan is to block it seventh and eighth period, end of the day. One, it's a little bit nicer at that time of the day, especially if we're working outside. And the second thing we can do is then those students that are in that program can also have sixth-period lunch. And then sixth-period lunch would lead right into going into a team with Mr. Grody, so an extended 16 minutes. That might just give them a bigger block of time, especially if they're doing some trips off-site to some different places. So great questions.
One more. If this takes off like you're planning, and I hope it does, do you plan next year to expand it, if at all?
Yeah, certainly, we want it to, we're going to get the first year in, and hopefully it goes well, but yes, we want to expand it. My superintendent says, "Just calm down," and I have visions, yes, of things in the future, certainly. I do think it'll be a great foundation to bigger projects later on, is our goal. And we have a couple other things kind of in the works with other places, too, that'll hopefully be a part of this program, not this first year, but in future years.
First semester, second semester?
Yeah, we are going to go all year with it. So it'll be two full credits, two periods a day.
So they're going to have to get used to working outside in nice weather?
There are, we are going to purchase a textbook. That was one thing we were talking about prior to, we're going to purchase a textbook to expose them to a lot of different things. We've talked to some different contractors on, you know, coming in and showing them how to do plumbing. Like, we'll have a false wall up to do the electrical and plumbing there. So we believe we can fill it with an entire year. But certainly, the beauty of the Yogi Bear thing is if that first one goes well, there is a need for another one and another one. So we don't think we'll run out of things to do. And the students are going to be a part of, how many, what do we need for materials? The, you know, Jared Smart has already been amazing with showing them how to read plans. He has some ideas there. So I think it'll be a really neat project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Henshaw, you're down here. Anything tonight special from you? All right. Okay, no board policy. That takes us to general business. I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 8 as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items 1 through 10, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Items 11, 12, and 13 are there for your information only. There's a thank you note there to the Board of Education. That takes us to our formal board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report this evening they would like to share?
We, the Transportation Committee met when we were all able to get together. Very productive, nothing serious. The utilization of the centralized pickup locations, again, have been a blessing. It's one of those things that you find out after you do it, and it's like, why didn't we do this sooner? So that's a very positive outcome. Drive times are still right where they need to be. Most of the kids are off before the 4:25. They're all clear. Another positive, some districts are out a lot longer. The fleet information hasn't changed a whole lot. We did receive two more propane buses through the diesel grant that we applied for. Great tool to utilize. The two full-size expeditions have also been received. We went to expeditions because the Suburbans weren't available. Maintenance truck is supposed to be in mid-March. Couple wheelchair buses, propane buses, have been requested, ordered. Those are going to be able to seat as many, the 71 seats rather than the 77. It's good to get those wheelchair buses in production for those kids. The other, the other main topic that we were discussing or getting into debate with is also the no-busing zones, so we just wanted to let everybody know that that is in discussion. We will be bringing forward more plans in the future, so thank you.
All right. For TeachWell, I just think the biggest thing to note down there is I don't know how many actual full-time employees we had when I started that back in '07, but 70-ish, and we're up to like 96. So that continues to grow. And we have, I think, each of our, each of the member districts actually had a mid-year grad this year at the same time, so I thought that was kind of a cool statistic, so. Any other reports for tonight?
Real quick, I have received some inquiries regarding the upcoming legislation regarding the grocery tax in the state of South Dakota and how that'll affect schools. Just a reminder that that is not something that'll affect schools, but I do recommend and highly suggest that you contact your city councilman and talk to them about the grocery tax, because that is not a school or education tax, but that is something that I have received many inquiries on.
Also, I'd like to touch base on the Safety Committee. We met on the 17th. The Officer Sarda had commented that the cameras have been, there's been new cameras been installed. The observations from this year's school, he said, were right on schedule. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Sub move.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and thank you very much for coming tonight.